Sandy Township. There is Sandy Township, they're facing that.
They paid for Falls Street. They vote for Falls Street council members. That's how.
Is one of them applying to fight in?
There are Falls Street taxes. The only two properties are, we can go ahead and update the meeting.
Did you ask him why they didn't come and ask the city of the township? They had public hearings on it.
We'll cover that for now.
You asked that question at the end. All in order, we'll start with the federal agents.
United States of America, and to your body for this stands, a nation under God, and equal of liberty and justice for all.
We had an executive discussion, and it was mostly about lawsuits. Yeah, legal issues was everything. Public comments on agenda items. Yes, go ahead, settle this for us.
Melissa Keane from Tamperow. Speculation without facts in any given subject can lead to misinformation, miscommunication, and misunderstanding. Words matter, actions sometimes speak for themselves, and silence can be deadly. Misinterpretation of each can cause chaos. On October 18th, 2024, I sent a letter to the Joint Board of the City of Dubois and Sandy Township. I did sign my name, and to avoid any further speculation, I am going to read them, because it does regard Community Days, which is on the agenda. I'm going to read this letter, word for word, and I am going to preface it with, the end of the letter is regarding the statement made about trees, which the mayor and I did actually have a nice jovial conversation about that.
Trees can plant trees too.
Yes, he did rectify that, and I can further tell that. All right, October 18th, 2024. To whom it may concern, it has been said a house divided against itself cannot stand. It is also a fact that when building a house, it must start with a good, solid foundation. Creating a new consolidated community is much like building a house, and we must begin with a good, solid foundation. I would like to comment on some recent statements that were made at recent joint board meetings. Again, this was dated on October 18th. I would like to thank manager Sean O'Leary and Mayor Pat Reason for willingly answering questions that are put forth to them in the public comment section, even though responding to questions presented during public comment time is not policy and protocol of the meetings. It is to their credit that when possible, they have immediately answered questions put to them at that time, or promised to get back to the individual with more solid information answers when they have them. I would like to commend the turnabout bossing Invictus and other groups that had a hand in putting on this past year's event, Dubois Days. It was a success and a much-needed event, particularly for children, youth, and their families. And as both groups mentioned, they have with their businesses done a tremendous job of having good, safe, and fun activities and events for the youth of our community. I would encourage and support them in putting on additional, much-needed events aimed at families, youth, and children of our community, and would hope they will be willing to lead organization in these areas, but not to include Community Days in these endeavors. I was ecstatic to hear the Dubois Fire Department request ahead of what is known as Community Days for this upcoming year. As was stated, it is true that the event is held in memory and honor of the fire of 1888, and the dates of Community Days reflect this history. It is also fitting that the Fire Department should be the one to lead this particular event to honor lives lost, as well as honor our current all-volunteer fire departments. I would like to thank the firemen that gave much-needed clarification and distinct difference between the Dubois Fire Department Parade Committee Fund and those that were under the direction of Herm St. Plessis, known as Community Days Fund. It is true the Fire Department is not under indictment, nor have they been accused of criminal behavior, except possibly in some courts of public opinion. A few words were spoken at the joint board meeting by different individuals regarding events and comments that occurred during the meeting, and some are long. The words spoken, I would like to highlight, were grace, respect, and trust. In moving forward with the continuation of Community Days, I would like to ask the Dubois Days Committee to show some grace towards the Dubois Fire Department and respectfully trust the fire departments to head up Community Days. I would encourage and support and respectfully request the Joint Boards of the City of Dubois and Sandy Township to grant the request to the Dubois Fire Department and the Sandy Township Fire Department to lead Community Days this year and for years to come. A major step was taken with the departments of the City of Dubois Fire Department and Sandy Township Fire Departments, working together to make this event happen. This is a step in the right direction and a building block of a strong foundation. Trust has been broken, but these are actions of one or two individuals and not more of the departments as a whole, because one individual was a member of it. I believe it is not only right for the Dubois and Sandy Township Fire Departments to lead Community Days, not only is it right, in my opinion, this would go a long way in establishing trust back into our community, not only with the fire departments, but with each other in beginning a new consolidated community built on grace, respect, and trust. I would respectfully request that the Joint Board of the City of Dubois and Sandy Township encourage and support events put on Dubois Days that support our children, youth, and families, that bring our community together on days that do not conflict with the days that have been established for Community Days. We've had many events in the past, such as Tom Nick's Festival, the Sandy Township Fair, as well as others. Let's be real, the young people of this community are not watching city and joint board meetings, and the emotions have gone along with past recent months. What they are watching is the increase in drug traffic and open drug dealing, the prevalence of opening more and more smoke and vape shops, and skilled games. I believe this is a prime opportunity for the committee of Dubois Days to put its focus on establishing good, fun, and safe events for the youth, not only in their businesses, but in the community, and to honor our volunteer firemen by supporting both Fire Departments of Dubois and Sandy Township, allowing the fire departments to lead Community Days on the days at request. It is ironic that the two groups are in sense battling for who gets the right to head up a committee to put on an event that is to celebrate our community. We are a passionate bunch, if nothing else, and it is actually encouraging that the conflict is about who gets to be part of bringing our community together. I thank all for their volunteerism and the willingness to get involved, and hope it transfers to other opportunities that present themselves. As the mayor pointed out, volunteers are being used part of the tree-planting beautification process to help keep costs down and more our need. In the spirit of unity and non-discrimination, I would like to respectfully remind the mayor that women can plant trees too. Respectfully, Melissa Keane. And I would like to add, that is the letter, word for word. I could probably give people copies if they'd like. But yes, the mayor had said at a previous meeting that we join the beautification process, all you need need volunteers, all you need is a pickup truck, a shovel, and three men.
Three guys, three guys.
Yeah, he did use the word men, so I knew that, and I was real excited about the project. And I said, I hope he took it in the spirit that was intended. And to his credit, at the next meeting, he made sure he used the word people for everything. So I hope this answers some questions.
We had 35 Boy Scouts, and they have girls and the Boy Scouts also. We had 35 plant trees, was really great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
It has to do with, I'm going to ask the question during the public comment, but I'd like to know, because we're...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane Bernardo, Tower Lane, Dubois. I'd like to know, since the City of Dubois, over the years, has garnered a lot of drugs off the streets, and has put a lot of money into the county coffers, and I'm wondering, has anybody asked our district attorney to help with the Fire Department in terms of drones and the things that you're asking for now?
As far as the drones and things of that nature, I don't believe so, but we are sending a couple officers to school that the district attorney office is paying for, for wiretap and other certifications for investigations. And also, our district attorney, and I believe Jefferson County's district attorney also, is paying for something for us to update, for cell phones and things of that nature, for checking cell phones, when we have search warrants for them. That way you're able to get into the cellphone, which is really big with drug investigations and sexual assault investigations.
So our district attorney is going to give money for training, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
How much would that cost?
I think that training is like $500 per officer to go to, and then costs a hotel, things of that nature. And then the cellphone stuff, that's, I don't have that in front of me, but that's going to be thousands of dollars. That's both Clearfield and Jefferson County DAs are going to help as well.
And Jefferson County is going to help also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Agenda items? Okay, we'll move on. Proven minutes.
We're going to motion the proven minutes of the city council meeting, November 12th, 2024.
Proper movement second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Registry of invoices, autographs.
I make a motion to approve the autodraft $49,359.93.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on that motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. General fund.
I make a motion to approve the general fund $639,790.10.
Second.
Properly moving second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Penn Vest.
Make a motion to approve the Penn Vest in the amount of $2,559,208.93.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Waste management request.
So we had this request at our meeting last meeting. We did put it on our website for approximately two weeks. We haven't had any questions or comments from the public there at the city building.
I have a couple of questions, Sean.
Sure.
So are commercial rates in the city compared to Sandy Township, or what?
I don't have specific information with me, Jen, but Sandy Township's commercial rates are significantly lower than the city's commercial rates.
Okay, and so this is a 7% increase, and the city charges on top of the waste management on commercial?
That is correct, yes.
And that's, what, 23%?
Ah, yes.
We charge on top of what their contract is?
That is correct.
I'm personally not in favor of raising commercial rates, so I make a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
No.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. New business, first reading of council bills number 1985-2025, budget 1906-2025, tax levy number 1987, sewer rate ordinance, and number 1988, water rate ordinance.
Yep, so these are ordinances associated with the first presentation of the budget. It is required by the last meeting in November to present a draft ordinance for consideration. After this, you'll see on the agenda that two public hearings on that also, request to schedule those public hearings. So the budget numbers are there, the sewer and water requests, there is the ordinance, there is a $2 per thousand increase on both the sewer and water rate. Primarily, that is going to support a waterline project up on Coke Hill, an area that we were going to break up into phases, and now we are going to do it all at once. Additionally, this will help bridge the gap between the Sandy Township rate and the city of Dubois rate, and the consolidation.
And those will be on our website.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, those are on the website.
And what will the increase give us, Sean? Is it four? Four hundred?
Which is an exact number.
Oh, park, sorry.
Yep, that's okay, I have the numbers. It will generate an additional $514,000 annually.
Okay, and that's mainly to finally finish the Coke Hill project?
Correct, yeah, so we have a significant project up on Coke Hill with CDBG funds, water funds, and also timber sales from this year that will be used for that project next year.
And finally, after that, we can get it paved.
Correct.
Get it fixed and paved.
I'll make that motion. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
It's on the internet, it's on the website.
Second.
Properly moving second, any questions on the motion?
What's the motion? First reading of council bills number 1985-2025, budget number 1986-2025, tax levy number 1987, sewer rate ordinance, and number 1988, water rate ordinance.
Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
And just like the mayor said, this will be available on the website. Additionally, we'll have two public hearings to give over this ordinance as also.
Question, first public hearing on Monday, December 9th, 2024, at 5:50 PM, concerning council bill 1985-2025, budget number 1986-2025, tax levy number 1987, sewer rate ordinance, and number 1988, water rate ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Request second public hearing on Monday, December 23rd, 2024, at 5:50 PM, concerning council bill number 1985-2025, budget number 1986-2025, tax levy number 1987, sewer rate ordinance, and number 1988, water rate ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. First reading of council bill number 1989, library ordinance amendment.
Yeah, let's explain this one real quick. The county had changed the predetermined ratio for session of properties, so to adjust for that change, we needed to make a couple of changes in certain ordinances. This was one of the ordinance, whereas we have it set for two mills in the ordinance, we need to reduce that to one mill to generate the same amount of revenue for the library. So this doesn't change any payment amount to the library, just matches what the county did with the predetermined ratio.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of council bill number 1989, library ordinance amendment.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Downtown Dubois, Brighton and Night event, November 29th, 2024. Cheryl, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go.
Just was requesting use of the amphitheater for the City Park for this Friday for our evening Brighton and Night, which has been presented in consecutive years. And was just doing the formality of asking for permission to do it again this year.
Motion to approve that request? Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Housing authority reappointment, Ms. Molly O'Brien-Welkot, January 1st, 2025, to January 1st of 2030. Any motion approved?
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. HRI paving.
Yeah, I'll take that one, so this is just the invoice for our paving contract that we had for this year. It was in the amount of $204,639.31. And I recommend that we approve for payment to HRI.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Washington Avenue, final pay application number six.
I'll take this one also, so this is the final pay application for our Washington Avenue waterline project. Last time, we approved the, up to the contract amount, and then this additional payment is the final amount that we had for additional quantities, and just some additional work that was part of the contract, or part of the project that wasn't necessarily included in the original bid, but we took care of it as we encountered it with the waterline work.
Motion to approve, Washington Avenue final pay application, the amount of $29,539.61.
Second.
Proper movement second, any question on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Community Days, June 12th to 15th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Community Days, June 12th through 15th, 2025, involving the Sandy Township Fire Department as well.
I have a few questions about it.
Let's wait till it gets seconded.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion?
Yes. So, one, I think it should be stipulated that the money is handled by an outside firm, not affiliated with anyone, nothing to do with anyone, but I just think for clarification purposes, it should be handled by an outside person. While I understand they didn't do it one year, and we did have someone step up, I feel they should at least be included on a committee for Community Days. And then my final is, which we just talked about in executive session, is the money. We still have accounts, 10 accounts, 14 accounts, that are in the city's EIN that we still don't have any control over. And we need to move forward on this, and I would like it to be a good faith effort that I'm willing to, I'm all for Community Days, but we need to get these accounts under the taxpayers' purview. And you agreed to that at executive session. I would like some sort of concession from the Fire Department that they're willing to work on these accounts that are in the city's EIN. I know some of them are not taxpayer funds, which I guess that's a fine line. They are parokey funds, and that should stay their money, but we still have accounts that are taxpayer dollars that are as well over a million dollars, that the city should have some, that have not been audited, that the city should have some sort of control, we're not even signers, not me, signers on these accounts.
Well, first off, first question on, if I could just jump in here, just real quick. There were no motions, or decisions, or deliberations made.
Correct.
I believe you missed vote.
Okay, we just talked about the investment accounts, yes, no...
There were no deliberations, no votes, no decision-making.
Correct.
Regarding any of this.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify about that.
Correct, yes.
So in other words, she just saying what she thinks should be done.
It's not time for you to talk. What I'm saying is there were no votes taken during executive session. That's not permissible when under the sunshine law, and it didn't occur. Not, did not occur.
Correct.
I believe she misspoke, I was just making that clear.
Well, first off, I believe the Fire Department, when they presented Community Days, they said they have a separate firm tracking.
Okay.
The, all funds.
That's correct.
That is correct, okay.
Not affiliated with the fire. Okay, great.
Secondly, are they collecting the funds and making the payments of the invoices?
I'm not a private party, so I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
Secondly, as far as Dubois Days, I'm sure if the Fire Department has a need for them, that they will reach out and ask them. And thirdly, the accounts is another ballgame altogether, not part of this. And don't see how you tie the two together, like holding hostage, if you do this, then we'll do this. I just totally disagree with that statement.
Oh, I wasn't holding hostage.
Well, that's what it sounded like.
So the...
Why ask that question?
So the issue that's presented is whether or not Community Days are approved, these dates.
Yes.
If there's a caveat to that motion that he's indicated, if not, then not. So we need to either vote on this motion, or have a motion to table this motion. That's correct, I mean, you either need to approve it in the spirit.
Right.
As to the dates, that's all you're doing, I mean, in terms of logistics, that... If someone has reservations about the logistics, then they shouldn't vote for it. That's my position.
Properly moving second, any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Gelfand.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Waterline, notification letters.
From Mike Haynes. Yeah, so I wanted to get a little bit more information out to the public on this, so initially, you know, if you had received a letter from the city about potential, you know, lead or galvanized piping, or unknown status of service lines. So, just a clarification, so the EPA advised their lead and copper roles for water systems, which basically required all community water systems to submit a service line inventory. That inventory was initially completed, and any water system that did have any lead or galvanized, or even lead status unknown pipes, were required to send out a letter to their residents notifying them of these results of the initial study. So, you know, for clarification purposes, if you did receive one of those letters... So, you know, for clarification purposes, if you did receive one of those letters, know that that was our initial study based on a review of the documents and records that the city has on hand initially. And we're going to be continuing to work on this study. It's going to be a requirement that we go through and update this and, you know, try to get the number of unknown customers down and then also see what we have for lead and galvanized and just continue to work on that project.
In that letter, I believe it said about financial aid or something like that, financing of it, or am I correct?
Does it? Yeah, I believe it did mention that. And we're still in the very initial stages of this, so.
So there'll be more to come.
Yeah, I don't believe that we have, you know, the specifics or anything worked out. I think the main thing is, is we have to figure out the quantity of what we're dealing with with it.
Thank you. So people should not go and call plumbers and have people dig up their yards and things like that right now? That's not what we're telling people to do?
No, I believe there was approximately 40 lead lines that we identified based on our records. You know, I would, you know, recommend that, and that's just based off of what we have available, but I would recommend if somebody is, you know, worried or wanted to have a plumber check those out, that they could go ahead and do that. But, you know, we're still very, very early in this process of going through our records and inventory.
Mike, if somebody was to check just at the water meter where the water comes, the pipe comes directly into their house, you can pretty much tell whether that's lead or copper?
Yes, you could. I mean, that would be.
It's fairly easy. And if it's copper coming into the wall, what's the odds that there's lead in that line at all?
I mean, it would be, yeah, it would be probably highly.
Highly unlikely. Nobody would, nobody would attach a copper pipe to an old lead pipe.
Would be, they would chew.
I wouldn't say never, but.
Never say never, Mr. Mayor, because they did that when they, when they put the new sewer line in in front of my house, they took a piece of lead out from the main to the shut-off. I had copper coming in, I had copper coming into the house, but the lead was on, was on the city side.
I would say generally, though.
And I don't think, I don't think there's a way to test your water to find out if there's a lead line, right? You can't just take a sample of water and test it to see if there's lead, there's a lead line, can you?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Whenever we put copper in years and years ago?
Yes.
We used solder that had lead in it. So you can't just say it's just a copper line.
Yeah, you're right. It has copper.
Right, yeah, I mean, and that is part of the study. I mean, there is some mandates of looking at, even if you have copper and, you know, potentially what it went in and if there was lead, I guess.
If it was in the solder, all solder.
So if somebody's concerned, what should they do?
Ask a question, because I wouldn't know it, know what, you know, type of metal that, yeah, most people I don't think would know, so.
Our plan is to have an engineering firm kind of take hold of this project, and one of the first things they'll do is probably ask for the residents to send in photographs of their line coming into the wall to try to identify what that is. We're still in the early stages of getting that engineering agreement up and running, but that's, that'll be kind of the first initial stage, is see if they can figure out from photographs or if someone knows what the material is. Then if they don't, most likely a person will have to come and physically check out that line.
But the city does put a chemical in the coats, lead pipes, am I correct?
We use a sequestering agent that helps it let not reach out of any lead lines.
CDVG Fiscal Year 2023 Modification, Public Hearing December 3rd, 2024 at 1:00.
Yeah, this is just a public notification that we will have a CDVG Year 2023 Modification Public Hearing on December 3rd at 1:00 at the Dubois City Building. We were going to have in the back conference room, we typically don't get high attendance for those. Essentially, what we're looking to do is move our fiscal year 23 money, which was earmarked for a water line replacement on Quarry Avenue, to move it to Coke Hill. Coke Hill's in way worse shape, we want to get the project done, it's a huge project, and these funds will help us complete that project.
That's just information.
Yep.
Okay. Interpol Police Chief, update.
Thank you. Just wanted to go over a couple things as far as with the police department, I know we had some questions last week, and just trying to answer some of those questions. First, I want to go over like some of the things we accomplished from the police department 2024. We now have all in-car cameras and body cameras for officers. We have what we call Axon Evidence, which all this downloads into that evidence, so we're pretty much paperless now, can get sent right to the DA's office, and they can send stuff back to us for discovery and things of that nature. We have a new recording management system. Our last system was, we got that, I believe, 2003, so it was really needed, and the system seems to be working very well. Officers, we don't really like change too much, so it's, you know, give us some headaches, but it really does work well, and once we get it all implemented, it'll be, it'll be really good. We also have, we've been working on over the last year, new policies and procedures that also meet the PA Chiefs of Police accreditation standards. We're doing that in conjunction with Sandy Township to get all of our policies and procedures as one, and if we do it to the standards of the PA Chiefs Police Accreditation Standards, then we can work on becoming an accredited department, which helps with insurance costs and things of that nature with your department, and it also gives those standards for those officers with your policies. That way they know what legally is going to be covered when they, when they handle things. We have a power DMS, which holds our policies and officer forms. We were basically just paper with our policies, now we got all that in there and has all of our forms, so everything's in the system. If officers are on a call, they can actually pop it up in their computers in the car and actually read the policies and make sure they're doing the right thing, what needs to be done. We also have a power time for officer scheduling and PTO on the computer, keeps, it also helps with court dates, everything else officers have to go to, it's right there on the computer, so we can see it and make sure that everything's covered, that needs to be covered. We've had three officers trained in the crisis intervention team, and what that is, is it's for calls of service with people in a mental health crisis. A lot of our calls anymore are dealing with mental health crisis, and this trains the officers to be able to speak with people with mental health issues, mental health issues, and also be able to give them the services they need. There's another class that's coming up, we'll probably send some more officers, and my understanding is, which I think is a really good thing, at the police academy now, they're actually teaching that class in the academy, so any new officers that come on board have already have that training, which I think is a great thing. We also sent two officers, we sent them to multiple investigation and interview classes. We had an officer get updated and certified in response to active shooter as an instructor to teach the class. I know myself and then Officer Davidson's who we sent have been teaching a class, and he went to an updated one, which has really changed a lot, and we will be getting in contact with EMS and fire, because a lot of what we do with active shooter now really brings that into play too. So we hope to be able to do some training with you guys and get that. We have an officer that has started his accident reconstruction school, he's gone to the first two classes. I think you have to have a master's in math to do this, but he's a really intelligent officer, and he's actually going to go to his, the third class, which will make him an accident reconstructionist, which in the city, we don't have a lot of bad accidents, but when we do consolidate and we all are one, there are, I know from experience when I worked at Sandy Township, that there are a lot of really bad accidents that occur in Sandy Township, so that'd be a good asset for us to have. We sent two officers to tactical team conference to obtain multiple certificates in reference to the operations of our tactical team, so they brought back a lot of good information and good things for our, for our team. We did multiple public relations events throughout the year, such as speaking to students of Penn State Dubois, Dubois Area School District, and we also had a couple of having damaged license plate replacement events to replace people's bad license plates. We have automatic license plate readers now placed at different intersections in the city, so if we get something where a vehicle's involved and they go through that, through that intersection, we can use that to criminally go after them and find out who it is, if we get a color of the vehicle, and we go look at those vehicles and catch the plates on those readers, which we also have in our cars too. We sent an officer to drug task force supervisor class to be able to supervise a drug task force. We have an officer scheduled to go to a basic negotiator school. We have two officers scheduled to go to the wiretap school that we talked about earlier with the, that the district attorney is paying the bill for. Also with the district attorney too, I didn't want to leave that out, through that money is they also gave, the Clifford County District Attorney also purchased a night vision for us, I believe about a year ago, so we do have a night vision capability. We are expanding our cell phone data extraction capabilities to expand and enhance criminal investigations, such as drug investigations, child sexual assault investigations, and trafficking. Just to tell you the importance of that, this year alone so far, we've had 66 child lines to the city of Dubois, and a child line is mandated reporter reporting physical or sexual abuse to a minor child. And just last week, on Friday, our detective charged the individual, the individual went to trial, and he was found guilty of 134 counts of sexual assault of a child and related offenses. And with that, I'd also like to thank the school police, they helped us out with transportation of the victim and really helped out with that investigation. With that, I just want to go over some stuff, because we got those questions, and then when I was, when I was speaking at the meeting, I told anybody, you're always welcome to come in, talk to me, if you had any issue with what I said the other night, to come in and speak with me, and I will answer any question you have. I have no agenda, I'm not hiding anything, and I am definitely not the person that's trying to become the chief of police of the new consolidated department, I will let you know that. But I will do this job, and I was given tasks to do this job, and my tasks were running the day-to-day operations of the police department. I was tasked with reestablishing a relationship with the Attorney General's Drug Task Force and the Sandy Township Police and other law enforcement agencies. Getting control of the police department's overtime budget and working with Sandy Township Police Department with gearing up to 2026 consolidation of Dubois and Sandy Township Police Departments. Myself and Chief Krajelik, along with other officers, these officers and the Sandy Township officers, all been working really well together, they've been riding together, going to each other's areas. We have a roll call where they come in and tell us what they got going on, we tell them what we got going on, and honestly, I believe, come January 2026, we'll be ready to go as one department. It's a really great thing seeing all these guys come together. As far as the task force, and one of the main reasons we want to go to the Attorney General, back to the drug task force, is they have a lot more capabilities as far as what we can do. And speaking with some of our officers who are actually on the vice unit, and one of the issues that we started having, because they did a really good job, that vice unit was doing a really good job, but one of the issues we were starting to have is, these people knew where our jurisdiction was. So you go outside the city of Dubois, which is a little bit over three square miles, and do all your business there, we can't do anything about it, but those drugs are still coming in to this community. Working with the drug task force, the Attorney General's Office, now we have that statewide jurisdiction. Every one of our officers has signed up as a Attorney General Task Force Officer, Drug Task Force Officer. So not only that, but we are also communicating with Sandy Township Police Department, and we are now able to go out and get somebody that might be selling drugs and somebody coming in to our, to our city, so we can enhance those investigations. And as far as one of the questions that I got is, well, that's a state agency, they're never here. That individual has, has an office at the Sandy Township Police Department and has come in every Monday and talked with us, and all we have to do is call that individual on the phone, say, hey, we're working this person, this person we believe is going to do a drug sale, can we have buy money or whatever it might be for a confidential informant to buy the money? Boom, there's your BNI number, go ahead and do it. That's what it takes. It's not like we got to wait three weeks for somebody to come in for that. And one of the reasons why we had to do that, because, and what upset me, is we are getting, I got probably two days, two or three days after the meeting, I got told that, hey, you're on Dubois News and a post about how you're not being totally honest with, with the community and what you said the other night. And like I said, I have nothing to hide, I'll tell you everything I have. So we got a Dubois News post, one was from Adam Cady, how's the city going to pay for a management company costing 300 per year? So if the reimbursement comes from the PA Department of Economic Development, isn't that just another way of saying taxpayers split the bill? What happened to the police contract with the hospital? How can we clearly say the city is down on police officer count when the drug task force officers are back on shift along with the officers at the hospital? And then we got a reply from Deileen Shepherd, Adam Cady, I'd love to know that also. There were officers hired for the hospital contract and officers for drug task force, within two years, they went from 13 full-time officers for over 25 years to 19 in the last two years I was there. As far as I'm aware, they said it's 17 since they terminated the chief and one retired. Adam Cady, thank you, makes you wonder, doesn't it? Then Linda Folks Clark, Adam Cady, agreed, there are many holes in what was said at the meeting. Why would you abolish a task, task force that was specific to making the community safe? The AG Task Force covers a vast area, many counties. Why would a community ever want to wait to line, in line to fight the drug epidemic when you could have your own department do it daily? The AG Task Force relies on officers working on days off, which means less participants. Is this new council so narrow-minded to think that consolidation will not require a hard hit on drugs? It is said that professional jealousy is more important than the citizens of, in the community's safety. What happened to the hospital contract? Was it due to lack of knowledgeable negotiation? Did it lapse and the department price themselves out of contract? My understanding is that a previous chief did an excellent job negotiating the contract that brought peace of mind and level of security to the hospital. The hospital was pleased to have police presence and provided two patrol cars, multiple up, along with other necessary equipment. Where are these items now? The contract was never designed, nor should it been designed, for the city to gain financial from the hospital. The Dubois City Police Department was there to perform necessary service to keep the patients and staff safe. The citizens of Dubois need to start asking some hard-pressed questions, and I want a safe community. I want honest and transparent council, these two examples alone prove otherwise. Do not be fooled by the newest push for the police department to become accredited. It is literally a pretty patch to wear, but has little benefit to the department. I must ask how did Sandy Township lose their accreditation when their own chief travels to state, through the state evaluating, inspects departments for accreditation? How does that happen? You evaluate others for something you cannot maintain in your own department. Hmm. The previous chief established some excellent programs to protect and serve the city of Dubois and has taken a few short months to lose it all. I'm certain that it won't be long before we see some form of public letter or accolade and support for a specific member of the department. Buy or be wary, it's a hard sell. And then we get a response that has since been deleted from former councilwoman Shannon Gabriel, asking somebody about the canine. The canine was not trained for the drug task force. This is from Shannon Gabriel. ACE was around long before the drug task force was implemented. As far as, as a council member, I worked very closely with Chief Clark and supported the implementation of a drug task force within our own department. A new dog hasn't been purchased. There was a motion allowed, though, that allows the current handler to continue to work with specific person to identify the next canine, so that will be in place when ACE retires, but there is not two at this time. She goes on, Officer Redd is a phenomenal handler and ACE is the best. The city is lucky to have him. Officer Redd has assisted in not only drug searches, but he has been instrumental in locating missing persons in surrounding counties. I fought tirelessly and supported our police department 100%. We need people that will do the same, so we can continue to remove the drugs from our streets and keep Dubois safe. They are no longer providing full coverage at the hospital. Chief Clark is gone and stamped retired last year. That was known for a long time. Not sure why they are saying that they are down officers and didn't have enough to continue the task, task force more wise. So with that, since nobody wanted to come in and talk to me about it, and I had to read it in a post, with that, I am going to give some answers to that. First off, our contract with the hospital ran out and a new contract was negotiated, and we still have one full-time officer in the hospital at all times, and our other officers negotiated with the hospital because of the money that they were only able to spend. negotiated with the hospital because of the money that they were only able to spend. And what we could do for them was to have two of our full-time officers that would be on patrol and also be in that area, and we would do walkthroughs every two to three hours when possible, and there's no emergency call. So that was a contract that was signed that those individuals might not have known about, that kind of put out false information, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew that we do have that. And also, to that effect, this is a letter I received on October 31st from William Chin, who is the president of Penn Highlands in Dubois and Clearfield. Sergeant Clary, as you know, earlier in the month, the Dubois Hospital experienced an alarm for a person with a weapon, code silver. The event turned out to be a non-issue, but there were a few moments of fear across campus. While I was not directly involved in the incident, I did a lengthy review of the video recordings and sequence of events. I wanted to write and tell you how appreciative we are of your officer's response to such a potentially serious event. Within just four minutes, there was a squad of fully armed police officers entering and securing the affected area. This is a remarkable response and speaks to the partnership between the hospital and police department. Please share with your team how appreciative myself and the entire leadership team of Penn Highlands Dubois is for their bravery and quick response. Thank you for all you do. That's from Mr. Chin. Another thing with the budget, like I said, I was tasked with was to take care of our overtime costs. And our overtime costs, if I just start in 2021, budgeted for overtime was $75,000. What was spent in overtime was $131,278.52. So we were over budget $56,278.52. In 2022, they budgeted $100,000. The budget we used was $158,390.09. Year-over-budget, $58,390.08. In 2023, budget went higher for overtime, $150,000 was budgeted. In 2023, we used in overtime, $210,580.93. We were over budget $60,580.93. So as you can see, things needed to be done. So that was one of my tasks. And one of the ways to be able to take care of that with the officers we lost and still having a hospital contract was to stop the Drug Vice Unit and actually go to the Drug Task Force. And with the stats, as you saw and as I read last time, are pretty much comparable to what we had when we did have a Drug Vice Unit, because these officers that you see back here and those officers at our station are dedicated to this community and will go out and take care of what needs to be taken care of. Another thing, when you get an overtime budget that's almost a quarter of a million dollars paid in overtime, is you get officers that work an 18-hour shift, are off six hours, and then have to come back in and work another 12-hour overtime shift. How safe is that for the community? How safe is that for the officer? Let's think about that a little bit. So those are the reasons why we had to take those things. As far as the other question about a letter, there was a letter that was signed by officers of the FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 93, which is a lodge for the officers in Sandy Township and the city of Dubois. And that letter was written in support of Assistant Chief Dustin Roy over a lawsuit that was filed, because he basically did his job, had concerns of officers that came to him where the former chief asked him to do things that they didn't think was right. So Assistant Chief Roy did his job, went to where he needed to go with that letter, and his family and him got called corrupt and everything else. So that's, that's what happened with that. Again, I'm always open for questions. I have nothing to hide. Any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer. One more thing. Also, with this Facebook, and also there's people sending letters out to other people, disturbing letters and harassing letters that are going over the line of being, freeing the speech and starting getting, being more criminal. Some of those letters are being turned over to the state police, and some more are probably going to be turned over. And I just ask everybody to please, let things, on both sides, let things work themselves out, let the justice system work. I know it takes a long time, but we, there's a lot of people in this community that are acting like children. Okay? And we, we really are better than that. So I just hope that, I don't want to see anybody get arrested or in trouble over doing something childish here and things of that nature. And that goes for Dubois News, Dubois Live, Facebook, whatever. We need to quit harassing each other. People can come to a council meeting, whether it's to bash me, bash anybody else, that's their right as a taxpayer. You could come to a council meeting and do that. People that come in here and speak what they feel should not be harassed, because that's their feeling. That's part of being in democracy. That's part of what this is all about.
Thank you very much. Public comments. Please stand and clearly state your name and address. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm looking down at the police report. I thought it was done. I'm sorry. Sidewalks.
Yeah, this is just a friendly reminder to make sure you keep your sidewalks clear with the winter weather. What you don't want to see is Mr. Lawhead knock on your door with a violation ticket. So please, just make sure you take care of the snow and ice on your sidewalks.
Correspondence. We got a letter from downtown Dubois, Knights of Columbus, and we also got a letter on the bond. The bonds have been sold, and they were sold in very good favor of us, better than what we were, we were told they were going to be. It turned out very well. Normally, with letters like this, we acknowledge who sent them. We don't read them at the meetings. We just acknowledge to the person that we got your letter, and everybody saw it, and we'll take action on it if it needs to, okay? So let's go to Chief. You can do a police report, too?
No, no, that's, 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 that's included. Our power DMAs were still working through some tweaks with recordings, and this was just, we figured it out.
Okay. Public comments. Please stand and state, and clearly state your name and address.
Yes. Charlie McLingle, Green Street. I just have a quick question on the lead and the water pipes. You said they put some kind of a chemical down through the pipes to take care of the issue of the lead that coats over or something? Does that, does that matter?
Yeah, it's a sequestering agent, so it doesn't, it helps to prevent the water from leaching the lead out of the lines.
Okay. So my question is, what does that chemical do to the drinking water and the bathing water? Is there any ill effects from that?
Not that I know, but we can certainly take a look at that.
That's your concern, I think.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Right in the back. I saw somebody's hand go up.
Oh, it was, it was.
Yeah, oh, no, go ahead. Oh, sir. I, I just saw, I saw, all I saw is a hand and a person behind me.
I actually am just looking for an update. A few weeks ago, it was mentioned about zoning regulations going in to get the skill game machines out, and there's been all kinds of rumors flying around on why they haven't, and I was wondering if there just there is an update.
Yeah, I can provide an update. There were zoning deficiency letters sent out. There were some citations issued, and it's currently in our legal process.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Jerry Morris. I talked to Sean, but you know, I know with the winter weather coming up, and I can guarantee any of you in here would not put up with the mess that I have in front of my house. I have a three-foot, and I have to walk to the sidewalk to get to my mail. Because if a sidewalk is put in, I went from a six-inch elevation to almost three feet. All I have is mud. I come out my front ramp, and I have mud. I gotta climb a hill to get to my mailbox. Where is that fair?
Yeah, just for the record, that is a Sandy Township resident, not a Dubois city resident.
Right, but we know we're gonna be won, and this sidewalk had to be put in. And like I said, I don't care about the sidewalk being put in, but going from this high to this high is ridiculous. My neighbors, by the vets, is level. I was level with them. Me and the neighbor goes to the beauty shop. We're up three feet now. And I do have more water coming in my basement from this nice wonderful weather we had the last couple of days. I have more running, water running right down off of that sidewalk, down into the mud and to the grass into my basement. For me living in that house for 31 years, I've never had water in my basement. My husband passed away a year ago, and like I said, now I'm dealing with this. So if there's an emergency for me or my kid, there's no way to get in without having to climb down a hill. Sean said not putting steps in. Steps ain't gonna work. There was a ramp for a reason, because Mel took care of his mother. And now it's left to me. And like I said, now I'm going to deal with this all winter, mud again for four years because of this, with the, everything else going on. But then Sandy Township, well, not Township, but Dubois, Penn Gaunt and everything, has taken over. Mel used to park out front. We used to be able to have stuff delivered out front. Now I have a sidewalk, they blocked the road there within the 31 years that I've been there, and now this is what I'm dealing with, mud again for the last four years. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I can guarantee it, not one of you could do that, to walk down that hill.
I would say the project has not been completed. We are evaluating the situation. Unfortunately, the project, I think most of it had to be shut down for the year due to weather. Mike, I was looking at you. Is it beneficially shut down yet for the year?
Yeah, I mean, for, for the most part, there's just a couple minor things that they are cleaning off, but, but yeah, it's going to be shut down this week or early next.
So we are going to reevaluate the, the situation there and see what we can do. Like I said, we could definitely put steps in.
Like I said, steps ain't gonna do nothing. I mean, with the sidewalk there, the water running off from this storm that we have there, well, whatever you want to call it, the weather we had on Friday, it just runs right down in there. As I said, it didn't make any sense from going level up to three feet. And I know with you not being here, who knows what's going to happen?
Any other public comments? Dan.
Dan Bernardo, Dubois. Patrick, I have a question for you. Who's writing our grants now?
The last two grants that I know of were written by Clearfield County Redevelopment Authority.
And what were the grants for?
The one is for $500,000 for the city of Dubois and Sandy Township to help, to aid, let me get this right, it's blighted properties that people live in, okay? Not abandoned, blighted properties that are, that are habitated, habitated. And then the other one is $100,000, again, for, for blight. And we have our CDVG one.
We also just did an LSA grant application that, that I wrote for $500,000.
Yeah, and the stamp grants have been?
In the stamp grants.
In the stamp grants.
Have you applied for the local share account?
Yes.
With grants?
Yes.
And what were the results?
We just applied for it. We made it timely. The applications were due by November 25th, I believe, but we submitted that with the resolution that we did a couple meetings ago.
And what did you apply for?
We applied for additional funding for the Co Kill Water Project.
For Clearfield Water Project?
Co Kill Water Project.
Co Kill. Okay, I just wanted you to know.
We also had it, we also had a grant that was denied, and that was for a restroom at Pantry Dam, near Natta Lake.
By?
DCNR.
Okay, well, I did get online and take a look at the share grants. Wayne Langerholt, Mike Arminetti, who lives just down the road, and Douche in the 75th District alone, have already distributed $3.8 million in grants. The reason I'm asking is because that grant cycle, these things are already awarded. I know there's another grant cycle, but you know, when you look at things like Johnsonburg as an example, I didn't write them all down, but Johnsonburg got $105,000 for water replacement mines. Brady Township got $72,000 for a new truck. Trotville got $66,000 for a plow. Benazet got $173,000 for a, a public bathroom. Blom Township got $217,000 for a new dump, dump truck with the attachments. And I was looking at other counties, because the 75th District is more than Clearfield County. There were awards given out for one municipality got two police cars fully loaded, another municipality got vests to help with, you know, protection and so on. And you know, we had, we had a, a city hall where a lot of grants came in, and Joe Mitchell's sitting right here, and I'm going to give a shout out to Joe, because Joe had an excellent relationship with, with Arminetti and with Wayne Langerholt. I mean, I remember the meeting talking with Joe, he says, hey, they're on my speed dial. So you know, when you've got these people who over the years have gotten all these grants, we really have to question, why aren't we getting more of the grants? Especially when you have Mike Arminetti right down the road in Treasure Lake. Langerholt lives right in State College. I just don't understand who's picking up the phone and making any phone calls to cultivate like Joe did. And then I have, I have one last question to Jen Jackson. Jen, do you know how, who Joseph Hanson is?
Ma'am, this is not a question and answer period. This is, this is public comment, so you're free to make any comments you want to make, but this is not a, it's not a document.
Let me tell you who Joseph Hanson is, because of the fact that firemen have been degraded by Ms. Jackson. In 1967, a young man by the name of Joe Hanson, who was barely 21 years of age, third ward fireman, responded to a fire in downtown Dubois. Joe Hanson lost his life fighting a fire for a business owner in the downtown. So when you're in the downtown, Jen, or anybody else, you take a look at where the tanning place is. You know, on South, on Grady Street there? And you look at that big hole that was there. That's where the hardware store that Joe Hanson was fighting the fire. And when he lost his life, my brother Russ Bernardo, and I will say this because George, my brother Russ just died yesterday, he's a third ward fireman. And you know, Joe and my brother Russ were together. Joe Hanson had the axe, Russ was behind him with the hose. And I just talked with Russ about it before his death, and I said, tell me what happened? He says, well, back in those days, you know, again, trying to get people out of apartments and trying to save a business, that the next thing you know, they had a blowback. And we've seen those on TV where it's all fire and smoke and everything else, and Russ lost sight of Joe. And Russ was knocked backwards, and he came flying down these steps. And there was a big mix-up because nobody knew where anybody was. And keep in mind, those were in the days where the firemen had these, these little canisters on their, on their oxygen, not, not like today where they have self-contained units. When they found Joe, it was the next day, he did escape the fire. He didn't have one mark on his body, but they couldn't remove his mask because his face, his face was melted into the mask. So the next time we hear about firemen won't respond to somebody's fire, remember Joe Hanson, who this day right now would be approximately 85 years of age. He was somebody's son. He was somebody's brother, and he was a brother to all the firemen to this day.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Barry. Barry Albino.
We just have to get better as a community. I just can't believe that there was so much animosity going on with our Facebook that was pointed out. We just have to get better, folks. For the sake of consolidation, for the sake of our community, for the sake of our young people that are growing up and wanting to come through our community, I applaud you, Sean, for what we just read. We have to beware of wuss and cheap clothing. And it's high time that we take a hard look at ourselves and say, it's time out, we stop this kind of stuff. My final comment, Sean, thank you very much. My pleasure working with you. Lisa, welcome forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Last council meeting, I did make mention the fact of the land giving, going to be given away by Clearfield County to Jefferson County, and you're saying that there's only two taxable pieces in that land?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Now, there are two taxable parcels. The Russell Stone parcel that we received, Sandy Township received about $19 per year from, and then there was a Robertson property that we received $548 per year in municipal tax. So those were the two properties that Sandy Township received taxes from. The remainder parcels in that area went to Falls Creek.
Even though they were in Sandy Township, they paid taxes to Falls Creek.
That is correct, yes. If you get on the Clearfield County GIS, you can look at it myself.
I did. I did look at it, and it showed the parcel there on the other side of the tracks, up to the barrel line, to where the old fire station was. And there was, to me, I counted like 10 or 12 properties on that parcel.
There's two.
And it had in it that it was Sandy Township Voting Precinct, Falls Creek Precinct. There was a voting precinct in Sandy Township, but it was, and it had that they voted at Adrian Fire Hall.
Yeah, like I said, I did talk to the county commissioners. I verified the information. There's two parcels that were paying taxes to Sandy Township, and it was about $25 per year of revenue that we're gonna lose.
That doesn't make any sense. Okay, I'll take you at your word for it. If you checked it out, but I'll tell you what, if Commissioner Glass was telling you that, I'd take it just for who was telling me. Now, on another thing, if I can go on to another thing here, the waste management request. When Jen Jackson made the motion to deny the request, she should've said that I am a business owner, and that's the reason I'm making this request, because I don't wanna pay that because I'm a business owner. And she should've made that right out front when she said that. Or just let everybody know that I'm not gonna vote on this because I'm a business owner and I'm not gonna vote for it.
Thank you for your comment.
And I have one more thing to say, if I may, while I'm up. You heard Officer McCleary or Acting Chief McCleary going over the overtime budget for his office, and I don't even know who's, as firemen, we have a budget that we go to that, and I don't know whether we've gotten any money out of the budget this year yet or not, but it's only half a year into the budget, so you know, usually we get it in three or four months. But with this council, I can understand why we're not getting it, because you guys don't like us, in my opinion. Now, you can understand, he's telling you how much they're going in overtime, and how much overtime have you paid the fire departments this year? To me, we're sitting down at our supper, and we get a call, and we go. We're sitting, we're laying down in bed at 3:00 in the morning, sleeping, and we get a call, and we go. You have floods, you have windstorms, you have fires. And who do you call? You call the fire department. Most of these guys in here will tell you that when somebody says, you're not gonna come to my house because you don't like me, they're just full of BS. Thank you.
On the agenda, which is also online, and there is the allocation that was requested by the volunteer fire department, an amount of $7,750. So that will get paid, that is on the bill list.
And that is $7,000 out of how much of the budget?
So the city is now paying almost all the bills directly, so the invoices come to the city to pay for the fire department. So that's, we have a separate line item for contribution that helps them do things like pay officer fees, cell phone reimbursements, and those kind of things that really isn't, that municipalities shouldn't be paying for directly. So to work with the fire department, we created a special contribution line item so that they could pay for that themselves.
They're actually getting a 14-point something increase in their budget this year. Anybody else? Randy, go ahead.
Randy Schrempf, Patterson Avenue, Dubois. Mayor, you said we received a 14% increase in the fire department budget.
Correct.
Can I refer to Chief Kelsey here somewhere? Chief, am I correct that that's a false statement?
Say that again, Randy, please.
He's saying we're getting a 14% increase in next year's budget. That isn't true to the actual fire department. Because the funding, I understand it was increased, was compensation, which we have nothing to do with.
That's correct.
And the foreign fire insurance, which comes in from somebody.
Yeah, we thought there was gonna be an increase, a significant increase to the amount that comes in for the relief fund, but turns out that was a math error, and that's actually not changing. Is that correct, Sean?
That is correct, yes.
So that number basically stayed the same. So the comp insurance increased quite a bit. The money that's actually coming to the fire department is not set to increase at all, maybe $2,000. It should be about the same. There was another large line item that escapes me at the moment, but it wasn't something the fire department receives.
The contribution amount was increased from $10,000 this year to $20,000 next year, so that was doubled. The training budget was $2,000 this year, we'd increase that to $12,000 for next year. The small aims equipment was $6,000 this year, it was increased to $12,000 next year. The radio maintenance, we had nothing budgeted this year, it was increased to $4,000. And the mask maintenance went from $5,000 to $12,000. And additionally, the ladder repair was also increased to $7,000.
The allocation amount increased because we combined that with the cable and internet utility bill. That was $4,500 separately before, so we added that to the 10. We got rid of that line item.
All I'm gonna say is I don't believe the 14% increase is a true factor. Thank you.
You're done.
What do you mean I'm done? I'm a taxpayer. I got one more thing to add?
Still has Teresa's room.
Thank you. Yeah, she's at her home, I haven't been up for an hour. Well, she's my daughter, she'll wait. Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment. The money that Jen Jackson was talking about, the over a million dollars, back in 2003, check council minutes if you want, back in 2003, a motion was made by Gary Gilbert as a councilman to give the money, the $60,000 a year to the fire department, to put that money into future monies that we're gonna have for mask maintenance, for mask fund, for roof fund, for a new truck fund, and that's $60,000 a year from the city, was given to the fire department, and that is why we have over a million dollars, because we took that money and we invested it. And we have that money to make, we just bought $500,000 worth of masks, correct, Chief?
Last year.
Last year, $500,000 that we didn't come to the city and say, we need new masks, pay for them. We had that money, and we had it set aside because the city had given us money to put aside, that they weren't gonna come and say, they weren't gonna call the president of our fire department into a private session and say, we want that money back. That's not your money. Your money, that money was given to us to put aside for roofs, or put aside for new masks or for a new truck. That's why we have that money, because we handled it. We put it aside, we made good investments with it, and that's why we have a million, over a million dollars now.
Go ahead. It's your turn.
My turn. Nobody else? Are you okay? Stacy Downer, South State Street, Dubois. I came to the meeting with one topic, now I have three. Don't roll your eyes at me. Okay, so the first thing is, so you were talking about the accounts with all the EINs for the city, okay? So as president of Friendship Ladies Auxiliary, I'm under the impression that you have received our statements, our bank statements.
That's correct.
Okay. You have them, we don't have to worry. That is our money, though.
That is not money we're even thinking about.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about you closing our account? That is our dues, that is our...
Just to be clear, there were no decisions made whatsoever of any kind.
Okay.
So there were certain figures that were needed for the audit.
Okay.
And that was, that's the extent. There was no voting, it was just discussion about it.
Okay. But you did receive our statements?
Yes, yes, yes.
And we are free to use that money, though.
Yeah, our auditor asked for the statements since they were an EIN number for 2023, they were provided.
Okay, all right. That was one of, that was, that's one, that was simple.
That's a short one.
I wasn't gonna read this, but a memory had popped up on my Facebook page, and most of you know that my husband passed away, and it had just been five years, but a memory had popped up because five years ago, a couple of days ago, Friendship had put on a benefit spaghetti dinner to help my family and I with bills. So I reshared it, and I want to just read what I wrote, because I can't obviously show all the pictures, but this is definitely worth a reshare, especially during the times our city is in. If it wasn't for this wonderful community, my great family and friends, and my second family, the volunteer fire departments of this great community, I would not have been able to pay off some bills that were left after Chris's passing. My family and I saw firsthand how the community rallied together for us, though strangers to some, it didn't make a difference. People saw the sign and wanted to contribute. They stopped in and purchased spaghetti dinner tickets, sat down, ate, and visited with myself and Chris's family. The overwhelming amount of baskets for the ticket auction brought me to tears when I arrived at the fire hall. I honestly couldn't believe how much the community rallied around us during our time of need. We even had businesses ordering takeout dinners, and the firefighters delivered them in their own vehicles, not in fire trucks. One firefighter in particular donated all of the food. I will not mention his name. At first, I thought, wow, all these people knew Chris. But as I got to talking with some of them, I realized that they just wanted to support a fellow firefighter, an American, a veteran, a father, husband, son, a brother. Someone even mentioned to me that he remembered seeing him in the newspaper, that Chris was part of the cleanup crew at Ground Zero, and that's why he showed up. This right here is community. This right here is support. This right here is love. That's my second. Recording is short and sweet. And since Ms. Jackson is still here, I know we've all been asking for her resignation, and she's still here. But I came across council meeting from August 14th, 2023, 15 months ago, at 8 minutes and 53 seconds into the meeting. Does this work? Oh, I'm sorry. I touched it.
I believe we asked her to leave.
And we're asking, and she's still sitting here with no resignation. That's all I have.
Dave, we're pre-sandy township. It's sad the way things have gone around here. The firemen, I respect and love the firemen, volunteer firemen, we would be in such deep shit if we didn't have them. But the attacks on here, the fire departments ask for her. If you're outside of the fireman community, where you're not a brother, mother, sister, whatever, it looks ridiculous. It looks like a little vindictive vendetta. And that's perception is reality. That's my perception and a lot of people's. They can't believe the pettiness. All right, she shouldn't have said what she said, and she insulted three people, whoever they were. I missed that meeting. I make almost every meeting, you can hear the township. But you know, the difference, my husband did it, God bless him for doing that stuff. It was a quell between her and one other person, and that was, or two other people, and that was it. Again, perception is reality. Outside of the fire department, you're looked at as questionable at best, because...
That's your perception.
Exactly, that's a lot of perception. Because when you're inside...
Hey, Diane, Diane, you are inside... Hold on, I was moving up a minute, Dave. This is not, this is... Everybody, when you guys were talking, everybody listened, and nobody said anything. Let the man talk.
When you were inside the group and you are a family, friend, or fireman, your friends won't tell you you might be wrong. They're gonna support you, and they're gonna support the previous, previous city manager that this all seems, again, perception proceeds to go back to, is that everyone wants to support the person who's been indicted with many charges, well, let's name, everybody knows. And there's a vindictive ballot, because these are the people that put them out of the spots. But truthfully, again, I love the fire, I live on a road that had four major house fires, who share a win. Merle Stewart lost five kids and a wife in a house fire. My neighbor right behind me, 93 Smoke, Lenny Hess lost his house. Fairland's cutting a gas tank with a torch or something, lost it, and Buddy DeLong burned his house down because Buddy had mental health issues. So I've seen what happens with fire, and I appreciate it, but I don't think you're doing yourself any favors. I'm not looking to pick a fight with the firemen, but I'm telling you, from the outside, it doesn't look good. That's all, thank you. Yes, you can.
Melissa King. Thanks. I wanna thank Chief, I'm sorry, 30. I didn't have some of those questions, but I appreciate you addressing many things. I wanna ask the community as a whole, what kind of community do we want to be? I think that we each, as individuals in a community, can expect and deserve accountability without accusation and animosity. I thank all of the council members, all of the Sandy Township members for their service, anyone who has a problem... anyone who has a problem with the job that they have done. You can run for office that is coming up. You can elect them if they choose to run again. You may run yourself, and maybe you would have a different perspective on some of these. So I did want to just thank everyone for the information that they gave. Thank you for the decision on community aid, and the other people who have addressed many questions. I do thank you for that. Thank you for letting everyone speak tonight, Pat. Like I said, what kind of community do you want to be? You know, if we want to change, it starts with me. You want a better community, I've got to be a better person. And that goes to each individual. So really, going forward, I think that's what we need to see, what kind of community we want to be, so what kind of citizen and I am, am I wanted.
Thank you.
Leo Brooks, Assistant Fire Chief. Last meeting, I said about torches for pots, and it looks like some stuff was brought, and I want to thank everybody who did that. I think there's roughly like a week left in the campaign. The fire department's been doing it for years, along with Sandy Township. So all nine stations, the five in the city and the four in the township have these boxes, so a week left, let's get them filled up. I know Friendship last night filled both of theirs with Walmart, so that was a great job, but it's a great cause. So you can contact any one of us chiefs or anybody in the fire department if you want to drop a torch off on one of those stations. So thank you.
In the back.
Chris Endry, 31nd Drive. Is there anything written or an ordinance about a timeline of the council meeting?
Good idea.
It seems like when you don't want to hear what people have to say, or you're tired of the same person, you either try to cut them off, make remarks, or roll your eyes. And how does that fit City of DuBois and the residents that are here for a reason to express how they feel? If it's not what you like or you agree on, you do that, and that's not right to make them feel comfortable.
I'll tell you about the previous administration. They limited people to three minutes. One speech, three minutes. And I saw them clap their hammers. We have never done that.
Okay.
We let everybody speak.
So he stood up a third time. His time was hard each time. It doesn't matter if he stands up once, 10 or 20. If people have questions to ask and want to discuss a city problem, it's your job. You took on this job. Let them speak. Don't roll your eyes. Don't be judgmental. You want things to change, but then you end up like that, and it's not right to be a person.
Anybody else? Yes?
Paige Johnworth, McFoy Terrace. I would just like to add to that. I was also on the live feed when I was back here. And honestly, I understand that we're trying to talk about being better people. I'm an outsider at the fire department, I fully support them. But as a community, it's really hard to be the bigger person when your mayor is sitting up there rolling his eyes sarcastically, telling him, "You're done, you already had enough time." The whole chat on Facebook is saying, "Wow, I can't believe our mayor is rolling his eyes at the taxpayers of the community who are here to do what they're allowed to do and voice that are picking up."
Thank you. Anybody else?
Going on kind of with that, being like a younger person in the... Abigail Supleasie.
Thank you.
Being a younger person in the City of DuBois and watching like the eye rolls and stuff from the people sitting up here, and like that got voted in, it really doesn't look good. It doesn't leave a good impression on the people even voting now, turning 18 and stuff. So I don't know. It just do better, I guess.
Anybody else? We'll go on to council member comments.
Following just a police update, I want to thank the DuBois and Sandy Police Officers for the work that you guys, men and women, do. There's a lot of heart-wrenching situations that your task was dealing with, and that's not lost on us. On a later note, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Same. Thank you to our officers for serving and protecting the community. You do a great job. Appreciate the update. Wanted to say congrats to the newly elected chiefs of the fire department for the next year. Look forward to working with you all to, and you're doing what you're doing. You guys did a great job. And I wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you all get to spend some time off, shopping, eating, hanging out with families. And finally, just wanted to say thank you to Sean. It's been a privilege to work with you. You're a true professional. You're doing outstanding jobs. This is an extremely tough situation to walk into and deal with, and you do a great job. I know you'll do great at your next position, so look forward to seeing you around town and wish you the best. And Lisa, I look forward to working with you. Welcome aboard.
Do you want to introduce her? Some of us weren't at the...
I can just do a quick introduction, and then, so this is Lisa Hagberg. Lisa is with Captain Strategies. She is part of the interim management team. Lisa will be pretty much the face of the day-to-day operations here, so right now, we're working with her to get up to speed on everything, and I really appreciate all the work that she's done. So Lisa, if you want to say anything.
Yeah, yeah. I'm Lisa Hagberg. My business partner, Ben Caffrelan, will also be here, and we have a whole team in Warren County that will be helping us as well. And I am thrilled to see so many people here at a meeting. I've been to many board meetings in various communities, and there's lots of times absolutely no one comes. And so it's really cool that you're all invested and want to watch your community do better, like Abigail said. And so I'm excited to work with all of you. I'm an open-door kind of person, so if you ever want to have a conversation, you know, I'll give out my cell phone, and I'm willing to sit down with any of you at any point. So it's a pleasure to be here.
Jimmy?
Ah, yes. Sean, thank you again. Lisa, look forward to working with you. Weather's going to change here, you know, later this week, and it's Thanksgiving, so please be careful for your traveling and keep that in mind when you make your travel plans. I just want everyone to have a, you know, real nice Thanksgiving and just think about, you know, we're moving into the holiday season, let's get that holiday spirit. That's all I have.
No comments.
I get to do one of the nice things about being mayor. I'm going to go to the Oklahoma 4th grade to the auditorium, speak to about 40 4th graders about local government. I'll make it all positive.
I forgot to ask something. Is there a form of party between the two? I forgot to ask.
That didn't work.
Oh, did it?
No. It did not work. It was a disaster.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any questions on a motion? Slow on a motion.
Galvin.
Yes.
Stakes.
Yes.
Autobahn.
Yes.
Jackson, yes.
Yes.